We're on, okay. Welcome, I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I am calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, September 21st, 2015. First up, does anyone on the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Okay. Item three, approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. We have minutes in the drop box, we had 817. Did those never get approved?
They did not get approved.
All right. Minutes from 817?
Motion to approve minutes of 817.
Motion by Mitch to approve the minutes from 817. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Art.
I think we had, yeah, I was there, yes.
Yeah, you were there, I was not.
Okay, that's what, I knew there was something, okay.
Any additions or corrections or discussion about the minutes from 817? All in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
All opposed abstaining. I'm going to abstain since I wasn't there, so the motion to approve the minutes from 817 passes 401. Yeah, Mitch, could you?
Okay. The two that you have to sign.
Yeah, maybe we could have Mitch sign as vice chair since he was actually there.
I think they've been signing on the top there.
Oh, we just got a signed copy into the vault.
What's that? 1917. We also have minutes from 831. And it looks like, yeah, we had, everybody but Ken was there at that meeting. I move we approve the minutes from 831.
I was just signing the warrants, right?
Yeah, we did. Yep. Yeah, we just signed warrants at that meeting.
I make the motion.
We have a motion from Art to approve the minutes from 831. Seconded by Mitch.
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. All right, the motion to approve the minutes from 831 is approved, 401. First up, we have check warrant number eight in the amount of $29,047.3. I move we approve. Seconded. Seconded by Mitch. Major items on this one are 5,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, 1,700 to the sheriff, 1,000 to the sheriff.
The second 1,000 is for flaggers for East Road when they're putting the culverts in.
Okay, thank you. $3,600 for business card services.
That's the People's United account. That was for 1,491 to the post service for stamped self-addressed envelopes for the tax bills.
Mm-hmm.
To Amazon 316 for the Wi-Fi system for here to the garage so that we can cut Comcast off because they're charging us almost $90 a month.
Right.
The 430 was to put a computer downstairs for public and attorney access in the clerk's office so that they can do the research at the counter. And the 1,337 was laptop for the listeners to be placed, the computer here, which then we're going to move that base over here so that the cemetery commission and the water department can have a workstation over here online so that we don't, we can have them moved over.
2422 to Kevin O'Toole and 2698 to Kevin O'Toole. That would have been for the tax sale. And I assume, it looks like both of those are our part in that tax sale. We did buy one piece of property at the tax sale that no one else bid on.
Yes, and it's two, two actual parcels, they're the
That's right.
The trailer and the property.
That's right, it was split. Yeah, there's the trailer
And the property.
And the property were listed separately. 1,300 to Mountain Air Assessor's, 1,400 to NorTrax Equipment Company. Do you know what that is?
Well, that's greater bits.
Greater parts, yeah. 1,000 to VLCT Employment Resource. Bennington, I think, is that just our dues for?
Yeah, that's like dues to them, yeah.
And 1,000 and 3,000 to Daley.
Yep, that's just stone and shoulder stone.
Any discussion on check warrant number eight? All in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
I have retirement warrant number 10 in the amount of $16.07. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Check warrant number 10, retirement warrant number 10 is approved, 500. Payroll warrant number six in the amount of $16,386.19. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Payroll warrant number six is approved, 500. Okay, do we have any announcements? No announcements here. I will just mention something I learned, and Mike Foley can fill in maybe some details about, we learned recently there's another internet option for people in Shasberry. VTAL is broadcasting a 4G LTE signal that reaches some parts of Shasberry. And according to their map, it covers Rawland Road where I live, and it covers Timber Trail up where Mike Foley lives. I have word that there are at least parts of Cider Mill that it does not reach. But for people who are using one of the satellite services, you would probably find this to be an improvement, so it's worth people checking into. Call VTAL, I don't have the number, but you can find it online, which you don't have. We'll get that number and provide it here on the town website.
Do you know if that's part of that?
I guess, give it to David so that people without internet can call and ask him, what's the number? I can't think of any way to get it to people without sending it to the internet.
Is that part of the upgrade they put on the tower over here?
That I'm not sure about.
I'm wondering if it is.
VTAL was part of one of the projects over here.
Was part of that, yeah.
I don't know if it's the tower one.
I'm surprised if that tower reaches that far. It's not that tall a tower, if you've ever seen it, it just barely reaches above the trees, but maybe it does.
Yeah.
But I know it was part of that federal subsidy that was provided back in 2010 when I first came to town, and I remember seeing that my house was supposed to be in the coverage area, and then many years went by and that never came through, but apparently it's finally working, so people without internet can have another option, they can check out. Mike, you've been pursuing that, I understand, and
Yeah, I was going to make that as part of my public comment, that's why I came down.
Okay, well, I don't think there are any other announcements, so come on up and tell us what you found out about.
I have the phone number here.
Oh, excellent.
I have to say, it's an incredible improvement. Now, maybe just because I'm on the top of Timber Trail, but VTAL will send you for the cost of $100 upfront, it's always returnable if you're not happy with the service, a small box, no bigger than this, like a CD. You put that in your window and plug it into any outlet, and that's your signal. You can hook up your computer, any cellphone, any laptop, handheld device, and as soon as you hit the wireless prompt up in the upper right-hand corner, VTAL will show up. You can scroll down to that, hit VTAL, and the password comes on the box that they send you. And since then, it really was something, we watched a movie last night on that had no buffering, or whatever that's called, and we, it was just, it was incredible. And we're paying less, way less than we would have paid, and we're getting three times the amount of high speed. So instead of getting 10, which we were getting our other provider, which was a satellite, we're all familiar with them, I think it's all kind of the same, now we're getting 30, and we're, the download speeds are also a lot faster.
Mm-hmm.
So I would recommend anybody, have the phone number here if anybody wants to, I can
Yeah, go ahead and say it so they can hear it on TV.
Sure. It's 802-885-4444. They pick up the phone, it's, I couldn't believe, I called them just to say thank you because it worked so well. And they, they said that there's a lot of, it just seems like a great company, they pick up the phone, it's the same guy I talked to last week, picked up today, and they were happy that we had the service. He said even if you had any problem, they would give you a free month's service for anything. They said it was possible if you have a metal roof or a certain type of siding, which we have both a metal roof and wood siding they were concerned with, but they said basically you face it northeast, I'm sorry, southeast out of a house. And we've got a son in middle school, two in Shasberry, we've got an exchange student now staying with, from Burn Burton, and the amount of homework that has to be done was impossible with the system we have. So we're really grateful to have it, and I'm glad Tim pointed us that direction because I didn't know, except for the email, I would have known.
Do you happen to notice on the box, does it have any plug or attachment for like a coax or an external antenna?
It does have a plug, and I'm not sure, because they said there was supposed to be one included, but there is, there's a port, and I'm not sure because the plug, the cord didn't come. So what we're using now is basically the wireless.
Yeah. Well, what I was wondering is, it sounds like probably for their own cost reasons, they're sending you a box that just sits in the window, but it's bound to be the case that there's a way to get an external antenna into that box, I would think. And then for people perhaps who don't have the signal strength that you had, if you could run an antenna outside into the box just like you did in the old days with your TV, you'd have a better chance of getting it.
They have another one that they would put outside the house, but that's more expensive, it was 500.
They did offer that, okay.
Yeah.
That was, I was wondering.
And they said that that would be in a case of if it didn't work well in the house.
Okay, okay, good, good.
But, yeah, it was $50 a month, I think.
That's true.
All right.
And as soon as we plugged it in, it went right on, we called our other company today and canceled the satellite service, so we're saving money.
Good. Yeah, that's good news for Shasberry. I, when I spoke to them on the phone, I asked them about regular cell service as well, because we have plenty of places that don't get good cell service. They're not offering that now, but it could be something that starts getting broadcast by them at some point in the future, because the signal that Mike is picking up is a cellphone signal, it's what smartphones run off of. It's just, right now, they're only offering it as an internet service, they're not offering it as a cellphone service. Any other public comments?
I have one more.
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to take it out. I have a letter that I'd like to submit to the Shasberry Select Board to show that I'm interested in serving the town planning board. I know for some time that there hasn't been meetings, and we've been pretty busy too, but I've spoken to my wife and feel we have time to, that I could volunteer to serve on the planning board.
The Planning Commission, good.
That letter, I could bring it downstairs.
Just give it to David.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, they really haven't had meetings for, what, two months now, or have the Abigail's been out of town?
They have had a few lacks of quorum, they have had a few meetings though, and the big thing going on now is getting the planning grant in, which we have the paperwork for, but we're trying to negotiate, thank you. We're trying to negotiate because the bill is up around $12,000, which we're not funding. But we're in discussion with BRCRC, apparently they'll kick in an amount that'll count as a town share, town match, so that they'll match, anything over 8,000 we have to match, we agreed to match 1,000. So effectively, we have an $8,000 grant. When it was worked up by BRCRC, it hit 12,000, and I pointed out we don't have 12,000. But apparently, there's something they can do to have their input count as the town match, and we're waiting to hear a full explanation of that before we move forward. But we only have six days left, so.
Yeah, BRCRC believes that the rewriting the bylaws is a $12,000 job?
Yeah.
Is that how I understand that?
Yeah, I have, Chris has it, I have it as an email that I got Friday with the amount, which I immediately got back to Chris that we can't match that and we won't match that, because that would be $6,000 on our part, we only authorized 1,000. Chris came in just late this afternoon, around 4:30, and we were talking about it, and he's waiting for the full explanation from Jim Solven, but he believes that what Jim was saying was that the extra 5,000 would be what BRCRC kicks into its various funding, and that would count as part of the town match. So if they can put in 5,000 to make up the difference, it would still only be the $1,000 to us, and we'd get a $12,000 study. The actual numbers and how they came up with 12,000, I can pull that out and send that to you, but it's not final yet, we'll have to, we'll have to sign it before the 30th.
Well, now, as I recall the grant, it was not, we matched a fraction of the part over 8,000, if the job was bigger than that, is the way I recall it.
If, we agreed to a $1,000 town match maximum. Up to 8,000, there is no match. Everything over 8,000, you have to match. So, you know, it just goes up in increments from there. 12,000 is way over.
So they would have to come up with $3,000?
With 3,000 or 5,000, actually, because we're only going to have 1,000.
I think it's like we match, we match, so above 1,000, and I think if I recall, 1,000 got us to
1,000 would get us to 10,000.
10,000 or 11, there was something weird about the calculation.
It depends on the way they phrase it, too. After 8,000, is it matching like 2,000, so our 1,000 and
50%?
Yeah. Or when you go over the 8,000, you have to match everything. Like the Parks Grant, we matched everything.
Dollar for dollar?
Dollar for dollar. So that's the interpretation we're waiting on, and if, sorry to take this off the track a bit, we're the, sorry.
No, I think this is important, because we're on a deadline for this grant, and the deadline is at the end of the month. I think we all agree it's a worthy goal to bring the bylaws up to date and make them less confusing and easy to understand. Are we, are we hard over on the $1,000 limit? If, if we could spend 2,000 and get the full, the full grant that BRCRC thinks we need to, to get this job done, are we willing to entertain that idea?
Well, do we, do we know it's a dollar-for-dollar match, or is it a 50% match?
We need the clarification, because if it's 50% of 12,000, then, you know, we're talking 6,000. I don't know if it begins at 8, or it's a free, free ride to 8.
You don't match, I'm pretty sure you don't match to 8, 8,000. And it depends on the project cost, so if it's $12,000 project, I want to say that we would need to match 2,000 to get to
To get to 12,000.
12,000.
I would like to say that too, but the wording of it is, is, is kind of tricky in the way it's phrased, and that's what we want the interpretation from BRCRC to be. Okay, are you saying we match the last 4,000, which would mean we need 1,000 more, or cut 2,000 off this, and we'll be fine the way we are? Do 10,000, and then we'll have the match. But we need the exact interpretation of how they turn that phrase in it.
Yeah, the problem is, we're not going to meet again until the deadline.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you're going to need a motion.
Yeah.
So, I, I think it's important that we get the bylaws, but I don't, and so I would make a motion that we go up to 2,000.
I would second that motion. Any discussion on that point? Okay, we have a motion to increase the maximum match for the grant to have BRC rewrite our bylaws, or help us rewrite the bylaws, be increased from 1,000 to 2,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Okay, so we've got 2,000 there, and I think that will get us real close to 12,000, if not all the way.
Yeah, I would hope so.
$8,000, no match, everything above that's a dollar-for-dollar match, I'm going to try to 12,000.
Yeah, it's something like that.
It's something like, it's a weird phrasing, and we just want to make sure that it's being interpreted in our favor.
Yeah, thank you, I think that's a good thing to do. I mean, most, basically, most of the money is not ours, we're getting, we're getting help for this, so let's
And when it comes in, if it, if it comes in this way, I'm listed as the grant administrator, so I'll just sign it and send it in, and we'll take care of it.
Has anybody else submitted a letter of interest for the Planning Commission?
We have, yes.
We've had a rush in the last few days, actually.
Yes, we, this would make three or four, yeah, four.
Are we setting up interviews for next meeting?
Well, we, that was something I was going to bring up later in the meeting, because we received one this afternoon, one late last week, I forget the woman's name, and we had received one in the mail about a week earlier. So we have four, and
That's a full board.
I was going to bring it up later, we'll
Yeah, let's plan on having interviews at our next meeting. We're, we've needed this job filled for a while.
The full board is seven, Planning Commissioners?
The full board is a fluid number, anywhere between three and nine.
Yeah.
But you always need an odd number.
Oh, really? I thought it was five.
The state law allows you to have three to nine.
That's just how many we have had, I guess, in the past.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, I think there's always been five. When I came on, there was five.
Yeah.
Because you were still on it, weren't you, Mitch, when I came on?
I wasn't on the Planning Commission.
Oh, you were on the DRT.
I was.
Well, anyway, we'll get the number and we'll
I think the number is five, or at least that's what we've had for the last few years, so.
Well, you can, you can move it up or down, whatever you want to do.
Okay. Good, all right.
Fantastic.
How did all that in public, huh? Item seven, Cemetery Committee, re-adopt bylaws, access road construction project.
Number seven is appointment of the forest fire warden, there was an updated
Right. Do I have an older agenda?
Everything else is the same, past that one, it's just this one.
So you'll, you'll get ahold of all the people, Dave, and just set them up for next?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just set up meetings for Procedurally, let me figure out how we'll do that.
Are they done in executive session, or is that done in public?
That's a good question. And also, the other question is, does the PC interview their prospective members, which they might want to do first, I don't know how that should proceed. Because normally, a lot of times, the PC will recommend to the Select Board what, who they, who, what members they would like.
I like that, but
It's in the bylaws, I think.
Yeah, we need to check that, I think they're I think they're
Yeah, there's a procedure for it. They're appointed by you normally, well, I shouldn't say normally, in all the towns, the board or commission that would be getting new members would interview prospective members and make a recommendation to the Select Board for appointment.
Wasn't the other?
Well, yeah, the other one was the one I copied, but that's the one we're looking at.
Well, this one is, this is the only line change in it.
I got the cemetery, or the board, the next.
Okay.
What's the one about, Tim? What's the one about? That's the one you're looking at?
Yeah, that's the one we're looking at, yeah. Which I thought was the current one. Okay. Well, just for, look at me on the fly, fire warden. Okay.
Makes it official.
Appointment of forest fire warden Gerald Madison.
I have a letter from Jerry Madison from the State, actually, Vermont Town Forest Fire Warden, appointment form. The board has to approve the appointment of Gerald Madison as the town fire warden.
I nominate Gerald Madison for town fire warden.
Second.
Seconded by Ken, moved by Mitch Race. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Gerald Madison Fire Warden is approved, 500. Oliver, what, 30 years is not enough for you?
I agree.
Well, we do appreciate
Yes. Been proud to serve the town for about 25 years, actually, 26 years, and it's time to pass it along. Jerry's doing Bossonbury, he's actively eager, he's willing to take on the responsibility here. We haven't talked, I'm hoping that probably I can help him some if he wants, but one person does get off on top. He'll take home the job.
Good.
He's willing to take over. He's going to let
We want to thank you very much for your service, Oliver.
Yes, thank you.
Always there.
Call you anytime.
You've served the town well, and for quite a long time, and we, we really appreciate it. And that's not even counting the rebuilding the tractor you did, I don't know how many times, but thank you. We really appreciate it. Okay, now, item eight is Cemetery Committee readoption bylaws, access road construction report, or project.
Okay, the first part is, in the bylaws that were, that were submitted to the board, there was an error on the last page, page five, that was brought to my attention by Dennis McCarthy, he was doing research, and it refers to an old document called the Cemetery Regulations and Policies. It doesn't exist anymore, so the new, the new copy here and the one we would like to be adopted eliminates that line, it's the only change in the document. It apparently went by the committee when they were doing this, it's one of those things that's been there forever, and it turns out it's referring to the document you're holding in your hand.
I don't know where you saw it.
I'm trying to hold this up right.
That we have here, I did not have that in, in the drop box, but this is, as you say, the same document we approved.
Mm-hmm.
A meeting or so back, minus
Page five, item D on the notes.
Okay. Okay, I move that we approve the Shasberry Cemetery Committee bylaws amended as indicated by removing note D.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch Race. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, the very first thing, it says that the committee will consist of five members appointed by the Select Board. One member will be charged to serve as the chair of the committee. Does that mean that the Select Board does that, or do they do it among themselves? It's not a big deal, but it's not very clear.
You're correct, I would think that it means that they will appoint their own chair amongst their members.
Yeah, I would agree with that interpretation, but it's not all clear.
Okay, it's no big deal, I have no other choice.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the cemetery bylaws is approved, 500. You want me to sign a copy of this for you?
All of you need to re-sign that copy, there's five spots on the back, just like the original one, and then we'll have it notarized by
The copy doesn't have the sign page on it, okay.
Well, the next item as we're signing is a new roadway in Maple Hill Cemetery. Ken Kunrad, this road at Maple Hill has been on the plans since, this one's dated 1995. It's for a 10-foot wide road that leads from East Road to the rear of the cemetery area E where a group of new plots has been laid out. It's a 10-foot wide road, it needs several culverts and material. The estimate from Mike Slaven is $4,000 to $5,000, not including material and culverts. That part is being taken by the Cemetery Committee, they need us to provide $5,000 to $7,000 worth of gravel and trucks and men to move it. I don't have a problem doing that, I don't have a budget to do that, though. I don't have a problem doing that, I don't have a budget to do that though, and I've informed Ken we don't have the time to do it till maybe next June, when we get out of mud season, we can do a construction project, because it's kind of a long road. Mike would be doing most of the work, but we're going to have to truck and buy the material. If I buy that much material, it is most definitely going to press up against the top of the gravel budget, probably exceed it, you know, come next June. So I just need, like I said, we can undoubtedly make that up in other areas, but to give a go-ahead, I need the board's approval of that. There's no place else for it to come except the gravel budget. And I made no allowances for a new road and that.
Can you take it out of the stockpile you got out here, Dave?
It's all dedicated. That stockpile is going to two places, and we're going to add to that because it's going to have two fabric projects in the next two or three weeks before we get into the winter prep. And that's why I told Ken we really can't do it this year, it's, it'd be several days of trucking and moving material up there, not to mention the culverts.
And how many ton is that, do we know?
Uh. Steve, do you know how many in yours? 300 tons.
So what budget year does that?
It would be this budget year.
But it would be done before?
Yeah, it'd be done before July 1st.
Okay.
I mean, the goal would be to have this ready for next year, I think he would like us to do it now, but his time is the real factor now.
Okay. And if it waited till after July 1st, we could be put over into the next budget year?
Yeah, we could put it over to the next budget year, I could actually put it directly into the cemetery budget. Of course, that would jack up their budget considerably, but they don't have the money for this project and, you know.
If it's waited since 1995, it can wait from June to July, right?
I don't have a problem doing that.
And then we'll budget for it and do it the right way, yeah.
Okay.
And either to get at C, the CC and E, or what is this?
It's to get at E. I'm not sure why, C is the area, I guess Ken just marked that on there, E where it says steep hill. In that area, the new plots were laid out. The roadway goes up to a little turnaround up here so that we can, the hearse and the family car could turn around. It's not, it's not a small project, it's not a huge project, but we just don't have the time to do it, or the money, we just didn't budget it.
But it's our own budget, so we don't have to wait for approval or anything, once July 1st comes it can be.
Once July 1st, well, you know, if that's the way we want to do it, I'll just have it in the budget for looking at in December and we'll just do it July 1st.
Yeah.
I think that's a clearer way.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good, then we'll put that up for fiscal 17.
Okay. All right. Item nine, Molly Dexter, treasurer's report.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. I've got these for everybody. Okay, the numbers at the top just show where we are with revenue and expenditures versus budget for this fiscal year and last fiscal year as of September 30th, so they don't, they're a little apples and oranges because a lot happens in the last week or so of September, but it gives you a snapshot, we're pretty similar to last year. We have drawn, made three draws on our line of credit, we've actually drawn it down now, but we're in pretty good shape, we've got $164,000 cash on hand, and the next warrant that you just signed is not that huge, so this 164,000 needs to carry us through until the tax money starts to come in and we should be fine. I'll keep an eye on it in case something happens, but we should be fine. The tax bills are prepared and they are in the system, ready to be printed, we're just waiting for paper stock. They're actually going to be perforated this year, but we need to wait for that, the paper to be delivered. I expected it on Wednesday, and then the stuffing should take us a few days and they should be in the mail, I hope Monday, a week from today. Any questions about anything, I was talking fast, about tax bills? So, yeah, they're all, they're all sat, they just, they have not actually been printed yet. I'm going to be out of the office starting about 10:30 on Thursday and through Friday, but that's unavoidable, I'm going on tour with the Ramat Symphony, but I will be back So anyway, the revenues and, there's no change from what we've been seeing, we're a little bit ahead on both, but it was completely expected, we've talked about it before, it was about the sweet deal Dave got on fuel oil, basically we had to prepay for that, but everything else looks exactly where we expected it to be.
Have you put a final stamp on last year's budget?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask me that.
That's my favorite question.
Yeah, I think that we're so close, but Jones has a couple of little tiny pieces of things that still need to be applied, sort of retroactively, but we're 99.8% of the way there, I think, but.
So the previous numbers where we had projected we were about 80,000 under budget is still?
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to be rounding error at this point, it's real, real close.
Real close to that, okay.
Yeah.
I'll stop asking then.
[laughing].
Okay. Any questions for Melanie? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is our road foreman, Steve Washburn. So, what's it like out there?
A little behind with the grading, we've been busy up on East Road putting in some new culverts for the reclaiming that's starting tomorrow. We'll be about three of us up there tomorrow with the grader and backhoe bucket, truck to grab some stones out of there, some small, round hard heads that we got to get out of there. Other than that, we're trying to get caught back up with the scraping schedule, you can see all over town, some spots are pretty rough and some water marks and it's just extremely dry and I've used quite a bit of chloride to try to get the roads to stay together, which was just a challenge. I have the report.
How far behind are we on grading?
I think a week and a half or so, I would think. We're starting to catch up quicker now, we got most of the way over through to the hollow Murphy Hill, we just got most of that today. We got to get to Rollin Road and a few others around town that are pretty rough.
Yeah, there's one pothole on Rollin, I really hope you get to. These two know what I'm talking about.
We'll be back weekend.
We were talking about the trimming.
What's the story? The contract called for two passes, two different times that they would pass through and mow the roadside. When is the final one?
He's doing it now.
He's doing it now.
Yeah, he started up there and he's working.
Started on East Road, yeah.
I thought maybe we could break the contract or something.
No, no, actually, actually we made some differences now and he's actually making passes too wide in certain areas. There's certain areas where he felt he could cut back a little bit and then he could, could make a second pass in the same area, so we're getting it wider in some areas. If you go that way, because they're coming from that side, it's moving along. He'll be done in a week and a half probably, with the whole town, it's going pretty well.
And this is on schedule, right? We were planning the second pass in September.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's, we figured June and September and they'll take care of everything.
I got a couple of things, Steve. I had a person ask me about the stumps where the trees were cut on.
Holy smoke.
Holy smoke.
They need to be removed.
They need to be removed, and also that ditch on the east side, after you come around the corner and down the hill, is there any way, when our previous foreman was on, they were talking about stoning that ditch down there and maybe putting in a culvert or two?
Kind of the town, the people let us put them in, the landowners. Tried to do it before once and there was an issue with it.
Well, I was thinking if you stayed up that hill, fair enough.
I think we got, all that time we were up there talking, I think we got permission to put one culvert in.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we were up there and they were talking about the trees, but they don't have all the trees down yet, I don't believe, if they were supposed to.
Most for that first section that we were allowed that were marked, I think he did.
Yes.
We did.
Yeah, well, if you can, you know, get that ditch.
Finish that section and then.
Moved over on the, on the east side up there, because I was up there Sunday, Saturday, and it was pretty rough.
You may want to ask that landowner again before you go do it, just knock on his door.
We will.
And also that section on Blueberry Hill, where you and I went up there one time, I don't know if the board all knows about that, maybe you wanted to enlighten us.
Blueberry Hill up at Peebles residence, it had a left-hand side going up the hill, there's a berm and a fence and a bunch of stuff there that should really come out of there, so you could get the water off the road rather than cutting the whole side of the road out, down past onto the neighbors, that's where it's actually getting off as their neighbor, I'm not familiar with who owns the property. It's been an issue for the past, well, ever since I've been here, nine, 10 years or so, and there's never been allowed to get that off of there.
What is it? What's?
It's just a berm, it looks like the berm that got missed when they scraped it maybe one time, and it just, just got the ridge started, and then the landowner went up through with the fence posts and little stuff to keep it there, so you can't get it off, and it basically takes the road out. Every year we wind up spending a few thousand dollars to.
She had actually, she had actually called me when Dave stopped one day and took a shovel fall out of it, so the water streaming down the hill would divert into, into the.
Over the bank.
Over the bank, into where there's a brook there. And she was adamant that she had permission from the select board that this could stay and there were other events going on at that time, so I said, we'll pick this up later, but we do need to have a discussion, I want the paperwork from her or whatever she says she has from prior select board, because this is an ongoing problem, either she has her little berm and the road washes away or the berm needs to go. But it is, it's like a little thing and, like I said, one shovel fall and the phone rang.
There's fence there too, you said?
Yeah, little green chicken wire fence posts that they drove in and right on, it's in the right of way, all the way up around through there.
If, if the berm is taken out, that water will just go in the woods and she'll never even know it.
Pitched away from the house.
It really wouldn't get near the house.
Do you know what her issue is with the berm? Why she won't even allow any water to come over the.
They just don't want any rainwater on their property at all.
They just don't want the water. The house is pretty far down, it would never reach the house. And from the angle coming down, there's a little bend in it, if it sheets off this way, there's a whole brook down there that's just going to go off there anyway, in the woods, before the house, yeah. But there was a reason why I put it off for a while, but it's time to get back on it, that, open the discussion with her again, well, who told you and you have something from the select board that said you were entitled to do this?
I think we got to start the dialogue.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so.
There's a culvert, anyway.
Just above that, yeah.
Yeah, just above it.
Just above it, yeah.
Is that culvert not working and not?
No, no, the culvert's working, I mean, it's just, there's a lot more water coming out of that culvert than you'd ever get off the road surface.
Probably 150 feet of, just a berm up around that little corner.
Right, and it makes the water run down the road and wash the road right out every time it rains, huh?
Forces it to stay in the road.
The last thing, one other thing on roads, just in case anyone doesn't know, East Road is going to be reclaimed tomorrow. All the residents were notified between Buck Hill and Reservoir by mail last week that it would take place. The road is going to remain open through the reclamation and through the paving, which is two or three weeks out, but the road will never actually be closed, there'll always be flagmen there, probably from Green Mountain flagging to control traffic during the operation, but it won't be closed completely.
Well, that's all going on, we're keeping one grader moving.
Yep.
And in the next two weeks, we hope to have a 710-foot section on Shasberry Hollow, which will be from what, Murphy Hill up to this, no, not Murphy.
The intersection of Shasberry Hollow and Granger Hollow to the.
Granger, oh, sorry. Yeah, up to.
Just an extension of what started a few years ago.
And then the other one would be Eric Road, finish that, it's the one section there that the fabrics isn't on, because that turns to the mud. That'll be the two that we hope to get done by the end of this season, then we'll pick up the other two next June, depending on finances.
I don't want to discuss it now, but I think at some time we got to discuss whether or not we keep the John Deere with the side-mounted mower for just touch-up or, sorry, to sell it.
Yes, we.
It's kind of important for next year's, for 17's budget, right?
I thought we were selling that last year.
Well, that's, that's it, but he's got a very good point, it comes in very handy and it works very well for touching up different areas and that sort of stuff, so.
I'm mixed on this because I have different information from different sources, so I'm not sure what the mechanical status of this thing is and here's the man who can tell us.
With that thrust bearing?
My opinion is you won't get out of it what it's worth as long as it runs. And you have a careful operator, you don't get a lot done. If you expect it to do everything and all we've tried to do, it won't survive.
Right.
There's another system that could work that, but for what you've got now and what you can get done with it, I'd recommend that you keep it. Because it, for what you're going to get out of it, you're not going to get a lot less of the budget again.
Thank you.
So, you know, then you can base, do you want to do another type? I just don't see it failing, so I think it's worth more for you to keep it and use it.
The thrust, replacing the thrust bearing solve the oil seal problem?
That took care of the oil seal problem.
Okay.
What does it do for us? Given that we've got contract mowing?
It can reach up higher versus the mower that they have and get areas, we still get phone calls from sections that need to actually be pushed back in between when the contracted people are here. It grows up faster at different rate, different, you know, different areas or just stuff that they can't reach, we're able to reach with that. It's not something we could use every day for weeks throughout the summer, because it takes about a month to do the whole town, you have to put one guy on it for just about a whole month to get around once, so it wouldn't be really great for that. But once they do the huge, the big chunk all of town, you can go back and get the areas that need more attention with it.
Okay. The other part is, as we found, looking at getting rid of the giant forklift we have, scrap metal isn't exactly a great profit maker right now, so it might be, if it can do this function, there are some branches and scrub that if it could lift up, and this apparently extends quite a ways, could trim some of that back. I mean, until it breaks again and we evaluate whether or not it's worthwhile fixing, I mean, if it breaks and it isn't, we tow it back here and we ship it off for scrap again. The price now, I forget Steve, we were pricing out the scrap for the forklift and it didn't amount much.
I suggest if you put those off the bid, get an estimate on it, go put things like that out.
Yeah.
Give people an adequate time to look at, go make it a short, it's a 37 days we're going to open the bid, no, give them time to come, especially that tractor will draw some interest.
The tractor, well, yeah.
Probably your problem is it works.
But you're talking about the loader. What are you talking about, Oliver?
Keep it down here, it's a loader tool, a bulk loader. I think you can draw enough interest to warrant putting that out to bid. Get an estimate on the scrap out of it, get to the point of driving across, get it scaled and drag it, get it scaled and mow what you got to weigh, but put it out to bid, you might be surprised what you get.
I think we got, I didn't want to decide today, but I just thought it's something we should be thinking about, okay? Getting more information.
No, no, the old loader that was a forklift, the other problem with that is we have to cut the arms off of it.
Yeah.
Because we welded it, so before it goes anywhere, we have to cut the arms off so no one gets hurt.
Aren't there still some parts on that forklift you could use on the loader?
Some, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, I just brought it up because we've looked at some scrap prices and.
Scrap's very good.
Yeah, if we get, if we get, you know, really, if we got an offer, it'd be worth some time to take it apart and sell somebody some parts to it.
It's worth more in parts than it needs to go.
Yes.
Just no one wants to give you anything complete for it.
You have to sell it as a unit, about two, one parts it out, it would be worth more than, you're going to do the same thing, come and make a call on my air cell or someplace else and it's going to go out as a unit.
Mm-hmm.
I'll give you some names if you get to that point.
Yeah, okay.
And solicit for bids.
All right, that sounds good.
Yeah, well, it sounds like scrap metal, as far as the mower, you're saying now is not a good time to sell scrap metal, and it sounds like it does provide some small function for us now, but if the thing breaks again.
Yeah, it might be time to go.
I understand.
Then, yeah, I think we're done, but.
I mean, it doesn't cost us anything right now.
It's not costing us anything, but, yeah, we've been spending money on that tractor for a long time and say nothing of all the volunteer help we got working on it, so.
We do it again, but.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for Steve? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, bid award decision, Shasberry Hollow Engineering. All right, bid award decision, Shasbury Hollow Engineering. We got, uh, three bids on the Shasbury Hollow Engineering. And, uh, reminder there, what we're doing is we've got the, uh, the bridge and the culvert there in Shasbury Hollow that, uh, is nearing end of life. We're not exactly sure how near end of life is, but we can see a, that it is a big corrugated metal, uh, culvert that's rusting out in the bottom. We've had the state do hydrology studies and make, um, their initial engineering estimates on that. And the initial engineering estimates were humongous. Between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars to put a twenty-six foot wide culvert, uh, in there so that, uh, uh, it can pass trees during a storm, which is, uh, something that, that makes sense. But, uh, for a town like Shasbury to spend that kind of money on, uh, one bridge in one place, is, uh, is a hard one to swallow. So, um, David has, uh, obtained a grant that, uh, we can use to get, uh, engineers to look at that problem for us and, uh, elaborate on the three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollar estimate. Uh, let us know, uh, how long we have to think about it, if the existing structure can be, uh, repaired, uh, physically and legally, I guess. Uh, and, uh, if we have to put in something new, can we put in something, uh, less expensive than what has been offered by the state? We've gotten, uh, three bids. We've got one from Holden, from Mance, and from Weston and Sampson. Uh, I have looked over them today, um, and I'm, can't say that I looked at them in a great deal of detail, but I'm willing to listen to, to comments on them if anybody has any. My first thought was that the Mance bid was, uh, considerably less expensive than the others. I wanna say about half in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, which gets us through the initial evaluation and a design of the bridge. The other estimates, and I'm going from memory here, were in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range for the evaluation of the, the lifetime. And then something like thirty thousand to evaluate, uh, alternatives or design alternatives. Go ahead.
Hey, Chris, he says here plus or minus thirty-two fifty. Uh, can you explain what the plus or minus might be? Uh, the bid, I mean, the other bids came in as a flat rate and yours came in as a rate with a plus or minus thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, the timing material? That's for extra meetings with either the state, the town, or the select board to go over items. When it says plus or minus, usually it's the minus, you know, as long as the meetings are sure or there's less of them, you know, we wouldn't wanna lump sum it a lot higher. So that's pretty much putting it in your hands. If you guys wanna have fifty meetings, it's gonna be very expensive. If you didn't wanna have, you wanna have two meetings, it would be less.
Okay, thank you. I mean, the outcome's all the same, right? They're all state approved and?
Yeah, um, personally, I would like, uh, more time to study the proposals. Like I said, I got to them today.
I, I just looked at them briefly. I didn't get through them.
Um, there's a, there's a lot of detail in some of them and, uh, I'm not sure without more study that I can compare apples and apples. Dave, do you have any, uh, way in on this?
Uh, well, no, I, when these came in, they, they went out. And we also have a couple of these, if anyone wants to pick them up, from Weston and Sampson. Uh, one from Holden, excuse me, one from Holden. And, uh, Mance has a project that they did here, but I only have one copy of those two, so they can be looked at. Basically, these all do come down, uh, so pretty much the same services being offered. And, uh, it's like the Mance bid still leaves us lots of leeway in the thirty thousand plus grant from the state to cover things. Cause remember the, the structures grant, our match, uh, I thought my head was three thousand and we're getting thirty thousand from the state, uh, to cover this. So, um.
And the, uh.
If, if we haven't had time to, to go through these, there, there is a lot of material in here, especially from, I shouldn't say a lot, the, if, if you read through these, it's pretty clear. And like what you have there Mitch, a lot of that is that biographical stuff, who's the engineer and who's this?
Okay, well, here I can, don't have to work entirely from memory. The engineering study to evaluate it from Holden is seventy-five hundred and then, uh, twenty-two thousand to design, uh, a structure.
And then you have the other one.
Weston and Sampson. And they have, uh, well, it looks like they are thirty-three thousand and that is in the evaluation phase. It looks like the, uh, the design phase is not quoted. Do I have that?
Yeah, most importantly, number five roadway and bridge design is not included.
Okay, so they are.
A little bit of high.
Quarter bit higher than the others in the evaluation phase.
Yes. None of them, none of the other ones include bidding and contracting of construction management. Cause that wasn't scopeless. It was to tell us what we need.
Right.
And, and alternate designs and then a design of, uh, a structure. Like, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, uh, Chris, but like in Mance's, the alternative analysis was thirty-five hundred and the replacement of the structure, design was a sixteen thousand there. And that would give us what we would actually be looking to go out to bid with. But that doesn't include, uh, bidding and contracting issues or construction management.
Would you be doing core? I just saw on this and they were doing cores and everything else.
We didn't include it because it wasn't part of the, in the proposal.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be an additional cost.
Okay, yeah, cause that's.
But I think sixteen thousand for that is absolutely horrific. We can get a contractor here for fifteen hundred dollars a day, a day or two to do a couple of borings, it might be four or five thousand dollars. We would have included it, but, well, the RFP wasn't actually really the script. Uh, I mean, I actually gave Dave a couple of items he should put in there, like the alternatives analysis to try to, if you can look at different options, culverts or box culverts and get pricing on them, to try to shrink it down. But, uh, otherwise, federally funded projects or state projects that are funded that way usually do have higher price tags. As you know, like the sidewalk here was.
Yeah.
The sidewalk was, uh.
I don't wanna talk about the sidewalk.
We're, we're, you know, I pay taxes here. I don't want my taxes to go up either. So, and we're local, we're not traveling from, you know, we don't have all the travel time from, from New Hampshire where real companies work from.
So it looks like, uh, you're entertaining in your alternative analysis possibly that the, the culvert could be shored up to extend its life for some amount of time?
Haven't looked at it yet.
Yeah, what we asked for, cause when, when Chris and I did speak and I sent out an addendum to the original bid based on what, what we discussed, and part of that was, all, you know, look at it, because we're talking about, uh, I forget the, the initial span that the state said we need. Can we do it shorter? Can we do a culvert? Can we do a spent box? So that's, that's the alternatives analysis. What other things can we go back to the state and say, wait a minute? You know, can we do this instead of our half million dollar bridge they want us to build?
Mostly what the state looks for nowadays is, uh, natural bottom. But if you can use a box, a box culvert and put two feet of stone or gravel into it, it saves a lot of money when you're putting it in. Cause you don't have to, you know, span it through the, uh, the foundations. You can just put the box in there and then put a natural bottom inside of it. Uh, it, it's the same thing that a normal bottom, once a storm comes through is gonna do on your life. So it's the kind of things to try to negotiate with the state.
All of this is pretty technical and that sort of stuff. I, I think if I read that for a week or a month, I wouldn't know any better than I do now. I.
Yeah.
I.
Well, Dave is.
I'm willing to make a motion, but.
I'm willing to listen.
I would like to give the bid to, uh, to Mance.
We have a motion to give the, uh, Shasbury Hollow culvert analysis, uh, engineering work to, uh, Mance Engineering Partners. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Discussion?
I, the Holden one, I would like to read a little bit more, but, uh, like Chris says, he doesn't want his taxes to go up either.
Yeah, and, uh, Dave has indicated that he's studied these and believes that they are, uh, pretty much quoting the same things. And, uh, just reminding myself here, cause I did read through this rather quickly today, uh, each of them did follow the bid specs and providing an engineering analysis of the, uh, of what's, uh, what possibilities there are. And then a design phase. And we've decided that the, uh, the one bid is, uh, only provides the engineering analysis and it's quite a bit more expensive than the, we're looking at. Uh, so we're really down to two. And, uh, the, the Mance proposal is, uh, as David pointed out, comfortably inside the, uh, the thirty thousand dollar grant that we have.
Can you just check to see if this one had bores in there? I mean, just for curious.
Is that bald in that one?
Top of your best plan. And part of the boring, cause I saw that too, uh, because of, of the flex in the amount that was bid. I mean, in Mance, they have some, uh, topographic surveys and that. But I, I have to agree with Chris, the, the boring is certainly not gonna come up to any sixteen thousand dollars. Although the, the two boring holes we did over on White Creek were quite expensive at least.
That took them all day.
How much were those?
Uh, I think we spent a thousand dollars, but I think that was in, in the, the planning that went into it. Uh, but certainly more holes could have been dug.
Thousand fifteen hundred dollars a day. What are you saying?
Yeah, it, uh, it says they will do an analysis to see if a, uh, a less expensive structure can come in, but it, I don't see the word, uh.
Bore.
Bore, cores mentioned anywhere specifically.
And like I said, there is flex in the grant to, uh, you know, uh, even, um, Sampson could come in and they have done their sixteen thousand dollars with the boring samples and said, we need to do four more. You know, we do have flex in it. We have flex with some, but theirs comes out at thirty-three thousand without even the bridge or roadway design. Which is, I mean, whatever, whatever they're proposing there at thirty-three thousand, if they then design the bridge, which both Mance and Holden have, it would be way, way over.
That indicated is the larger part of the, uh.
Yeah, we'll spend our whole money and not even have a design.
Right, true.
Cause just to be, you know, again, uh, at the end here, the sixteen thousand, Chris, is actually to design the alternative we pick.
Correct.
And then we're there.
Yeah.
And if we do boring samples, we have to do a few extra, the money's in the grant anyway.
Right. What we would do is actually get a proposal from the boring company and send that directly to the town for direct payment, not mark, you know, not collect it and mark it up fifteen percent or whatever. So the town can pay it directly. And get a proposal and get a few different costs so that you can choose the, the one you wanna use. There's one out of, actually, they're out of New Hampshire, but I've used them, uh, for the project down in Pownell and up in Manchester, um, that I've done recently. And they've come in really reasonable for the borings and analysis. So, and you only need two or three normally, uh, you know. We didn't include it cause it wasn't part of it, but, uh, you know, I would say that it would probably be anywhere between maybe four and six thousand. So if you guys are interested, I could try to get a, you know, give them a call and get a price within a few days and send it to you so you have more information. Or I could just send that along to Dave so he can review it.
Now, if they're gonna bore that, do test borings. They do right in the brook, above and below, or?
They'll do them, uh, right next to where the culvert is, where the, normally where an abutment would sit for a bridge.
Right.
They'll do them there. They'll do right out on the side of the road, uh, one on each side normally, or two on each side, one on, it depends. If they hit a really soft spot, they'll go over on the other side and try to hit a harder spot. So usually you'd want two, maybe three done.
They, they're, they're boring for what?
Just to make sure if there's bedrock, if it's clay, uh, gives you a soil profile and a bearing analysis.
That's clay over there anyway.
They give you, they do it on the up river side, right?
They do it both sides.
Both side.
Okay.
So up to four, you would say.
What's their specs these days for a box culvert? It's gotta be with the, with the chambers in it? With the, like the steps inside the bottom?
For a box culvert?
For a box culvert?
Steve doesn't really allow box culverts as much anymore because they want the natural bottom. They want a three-sided structure. So, one of the things.
If you go natural bottom and you're looking at abutments, then they're saying the bridge.
Right. Or you can negotiate with them to put a, a little bit taller box culvert in, which would still be cheaper, and then put two feet of, of stone or river stone that's excavated out back inside the culvert.
Cause I did one six or, six or eight years ago for the town, and it had steps built in the bottom of the culvert, like that deep.
Oh, trenches to hold stone in it, or?
Yeah, well, what had, what we did was, cause the box culvert was only four foot high, seven foot wide, so I ain't gonna get stone in that. It's gonna be a pit in the butt.
They're, they're asking, I think, for a seven foot high structure.
Yeah.
So if you do a nine foot structure and the water's being pumped out, you can get a skid steer or something in there, uh, to go in and.
Yeah, but they, they, they wanted some fish to go through the thing.
Right.
Well, the one that we did is seasonal water, so you wouldn't have got to get fish through it anymore. Of course, they don't count that.
I know. It's sometimes, uh, negotiating with river, river management isn't the easiest thing to do.
Like that one over there, that culvert, top half down to where you're starting the bottom is perfectly all right. It's just the bottom's rough.
Right. That's being a, a, it's a galvanized metal culvert?
Right. Yeah, it's probably been in there since the sixties.
Right. And, you know, I've seen, I've seen other culverts that are like that, uh, not here in Vermont, but when I used to work in New York. We've actually built a culvert inside of it, a plate culvert, completely round. So you're shrinking the orifice size a little bit.
Yeah.
But then you would just put up head walls and pump it full of gravel and almost slip line it. The state doesn't allow that either. It also depends on the size of the opening.
Well, would they let you, I, cause I talked to Dave about this. Would they let you when the water was low, sandbag half of that culvert and line the bottom with concrete? And then, then go do the other side?
Uh, that's again, that's one of the alternatives or that's something that could be done. I mean, this, I don't know if they would let you do that. That's something that's been.
Cause that culvert stood, I read.
Right. That's one of the things that we don't know. I mean, I haven't been inside the culvert yet. I went and.
I have.
The outside. I know, I'm just saying, I've went out and looked at the outside. Um, the only requirement that also we would have is asking the town crew to go out and mull and weed whack and get it cleaned up so we can do a good inspection. So we could get inside it.
All you need's a booth.
Who's the tractor?
Go in and let in, you're all right.
All right, let's, uh, let's decide this issue, uh, unless someone else has a pressing comment. All in favor of accepting the, uh, Mance Engineering Partners' proposal for, uh, engineering study of Shasbury Hollow culvert? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstaining? That motion passes five zero zero. Thank you, Chris.
I'll sign out and get in touch with you. And they all knew it was tonight, so. Well, they're all from New Hampshire and upstate.
All right, item twelve is the bid award decision on Coal Hall exterior painting. Dave, I know you have some opinions about this, though.
Yeah, I think this should be shelved and we should rebid this, uh, in the spring. I have documents that go back to two thousand and eight from, uh, Keefe and Wesner and their estimate of the price of the cost of the exterior painting. Uh, and also a bid from a, a local contractor. One of our bids was far below that bid from, from seven years ago. Another one was, was far above where it should even be today by inflation. Uh, and that bid did not include any dealing with hazardous material, which we suspect the building has lead paint on it, uh, which would drive his cost up too. The lower bid, uh, I've checked with his references and it, it's good, except, uh, again, it concerns me that it's, it's so low that, uh, and he's basically a one-person operation, that this might run into a lot of overruns. I'd like to reword it and change it, maybe, uh, section it off, um, and try and drum up some more support for the project in the spring. Uh, maybe bid it in February or something, looking to get on somebody's schedule. And really go after some of the people around here to get, uh, get more enthusiasm for it. Cause it's a job that needs to get done. The wood in a lot of areas is, is exposed. Excuse me?
We need repair.
Well, yeah, there was repair on it too. Uh, the, the one bid was, was nicely laid out, but, uh, as I said, it, it came in substantially. as I said, it came in substantially below the 2008 estimates, and I don't know how it could actually be done for that amount. And the other one was, was very, very high. Yeah, you all have them, so. And that didn't include, like I said, dealing with, with hazardous material, which the building has light in it. As soon as I put the ad in the paper, I got the letter from the state wondering what I was going to get. They, they check these ads carefully. They wanted to make sure that I was going to have lead abatement and licensed contractor and everything. So I think the best thing to do would be to not award this bid, and I would rephrase this and get it out in the spring and look to get segmented bidding if we can't get everything.
I'll make a motion to forego these bids in lieu of a new bid form for next spring based on the different details that we saw in the prior, the specifics in that layout that you had in the drop box.
Second.
We have a motion, and I'm going to paraphrase, to postpone the decision on Coal Hall painting and rebid during the winter with, and revisit the decision in the spring. Does that sound like what you said?
Good enough.
And that was moved by Mitch, seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion to postpone the decision on Coal Hall painting and rebid it over the winter and redecided in the spring passes 5-0-0. And it's another item for Dave's to-do list.
Next item is Sawmill Road. In reviewing the 911 system and our keeping it up to date, Sawmill Road needs to be renamed because it, it's in conflict. It doesn't really exist. There's a Sawmill Road in Benton, so we can't have it. It clashes in the 911 system. We sent certified letters to the three residents of Sawmill Road that we were thinking about name change. We did get one reply that East Mountain Road would work for them. East Mountain Road doesn't conflict with Bennington or anything else in 911, so what we want to do is change the name of Sawmill Road to East Mountain Road. The select board has sole authority over changing road names, but what I would suggest is sending out, I'll send out another certified letter to the three residents saying that we intend to change the name of the road at the October 19 meeting. That'll give them the October 5 meeting to come in, at least a month to object if they object. Two people we didn't even hear back from for the last letter. This is really a procedural thing to get the right numbers in, in 911. As it stands now, if you have, you know, if you have the tough book in the car and you're looking it up when you're responding, you can clearly see where the houses are, but it's just not right in the system. How it got that way, I'm not sure, but it needs to be corrected. It's one of those.
I'll take that. I mean, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I just want to give them one more certified letter, and please come to notify me or remember the board, come to the October 5 meeting if you object to the change of this road name, and October 19 we'll change the name of the road. And alls we have to do is put it in, then we will notify 911 that it's now East Mountain Road, and the three houses on it have the correct address, and it'll clean up the whole thing.
So, so the state is saying that they don't recognize?
Yeah, it's in the 911 system. When, when you enter Sawmill, it can come up as Bennington. It gets confusing. Some people get their mail as east, as Lower East Road.
Yeah.
When they're actually on Sawmill Road. The whole thing, it can be relatively confusing. The only saving grace is that, as I said, because you can do all this on the screen in the car, the fire truck or whatever, you can see where the place actually is, but it's still improper.
Okay.
And needs to be fixed.
While we're at it, we ought to change Madison Road. There's a Madison Road in Shasbury that has a North Bennington mailing address. If that isn't confusing, and then just the other side of town is Madison Road in Bennington.
Is that right?
Yeah, so.
That one doesn't seem to bother them.
It's Crooked George and I is George.
Oh, yes, you're right. Crooked George Madison Road. That's right.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to bother them, but this, this one over here bothers them.
Three residents?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we'll just make it fair, and if we hear from someone we didn't last time, because Shelley and I have been looking through this stuff for a while, but I would figure, you know, give them until October 19, and if they don't come in and say anything, they'll have a new address.
Okay.
Apparently, most of them are getting their mail, in mail, in P.O. boxes anywhere.
Okay.
Without objection, we'll allow David to proceed as he suggests relative to the renaming of Sawmill Road. All right, item 14, Coal Hall phone system upgrade.
All right, the phone system in the building is, the PBX system we have now is more than 25 years old. It does very little. My phone, for example, this phone on the county here stopped working a few months ago. Several phones are giving out. They're all old. So I started looking at equipment upgrades and changing the service. Right now, SilverNet costs $401 a month, a little over $200 a month of that is just recurring costs for renting the equipment. The rest is paying for phone calls. I had looked into getting new equipment, and the three people that came in, and the prices range from CIT Associates for equipment as $2,900 a month, to, again, rentals from SilverNet that will run close to $2,400 annually, I'm sorry, $4,500 annually for the first three years, and then dropping to $2,500. That doesn't include making phone calls. The other one was First Choice, which just talked about equipment for $4,600.
Yeah.
So equipment came in at CIT at $3,000, which would set us all up with a PBX and all-new phones. There would be one number to call the town instead of the multiplicative numbers. The plan is to cut the phone lines down to four. That way, no one would get a busy signal to the fifth caller, and frankly, there's rarely more than two or three of us in the building. So we're just not getting that.
How many phone lines do we have now?
We have six now. So, and we're paying for each one to SilverNet, and it's, it costs money. Now, with the one line coming in, you'd call the town of Shasbury, choose one for the clerk, two for the treasurer, and so on, and it would just go to that phone. Each phone have call waiting, caller ID, and voicemail. We'd be able to transfer calls, which really can't work on these phones now. You just lose the calls. It's just, it's old. Yeah, the PBX, like I said, on the wall is, was state-of-the-art maybe 30 years ago, and it's just had it. I was discussing this with Tim, the idea of voice-over Internet protocol came in, which frankly, I know very little about. But the hardware is still the hardware. Now, the PBX could come off this, because apparently that can be done on a voiceover also, but I think what we're talking about is maybe getting some more information on the voiceover network. But my only problem with that is you lose the Internet, Town Hall is completely out, cut out. You lose power, Town Hall is completely cut out. We will have one hard line. We have to have a POTS line for the fax, but no one will have the fax number to call in here. And we discussed maybe the main line somehow could still function. I, I have no idea. We'd have to get some technical people to figure this out, but the price, the price we're looking at here could only go lower by going to the voiceover lines. If we can get that to work, I think we're in a reasonable ballpark here for equipment replacement. We try to have conference calls out here using one of these phones, and it's just not really good. We can get a, a small conference phone out here, which would work well, replace all these so that, you know, they're simply bringing it up to date is all it would be. It's not anything exotic. In fact, I went to SilverNet because they have a hosted PBX, like a cloud service and everything. That was all, you know, nice, but it's really expensive, and we don't need it. We just need an answering machine and a way to transfer calls between each other and things like that. And most importantly, a centralized line to call in, so people don't have to call, you know, you can hear the phone ring around the building as people are trying to get the right person, you know. Yeah, it happens. You know, the phone, one phone rings after another, whereas, you know, you could get right to the person you're looking for. And, and poor Judy gets every single phone call, it seems like, for, you know, things she has nothing to do with, and is constantly moving people to the right lines, which then they have to hang up and dial again because we can't transfer.
I saw a couple of things in the drop box, some of the, what, ECI and other CIT and so forth. Has there, some vendors let you rent for much less than what Silver's doing? I mean, if you're going to replace phone, I mean, have you talked about SilverNet replacing our hardware?
Yeah, they were in here. That's part of it. Nine phones on a hosted PBX, a monthly rental is $174.55 with a monthly fee of $197.50.
That's still $400.
Yeah, the annual on that is $44.70 a year, and that doesn't include actually answering the phone, which they charge for every phone call you get.
So, I mean, even if we did buy these for what, 30, what was that, what, 38?
Uh, well, you rent them for three years, so your three-year cost, you're paying, what, the annual rental $44.70, so you're paying, in three years, you're paying $12,000.
That's at SilverNet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, the other one.
Well, CIT, you can buy the whole system for $2,900.
But is that something we're going to have to upgrade every three years?
Oh, no, no. We're not going to upgrade from SilverNet in three years. We just get to pay a smaller recurring fee.
I'm just saying, sometime, sometime you get a better deal if you do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Obviously, now with SilverNet.
Yeah, for $20, for $3,000, we would, we would own the equipment. The PBX, if we went that route, the PBX would, much like the one downstairs, sit on the wall for 30 years. And for our kind of operation, I mean, we're not going to need to upgrade. We're not expanding.
Well, I got a quick, there was a, one poly, no, what was that? There was one option that, and one of them had one option and one of them had two, and I can't remember what it was.
Was that the four-by-eight-by-two cards?
Yeah, one, yes, maybe.
The, the four-by-eight-by-two card, like from CIT, CIT, will give us the four phone lines. If I wanted to have, continue the six phone lines, I'd have to get two four-by-eight-by-two cards for the six, and that raises, goes, raise their price to $4,000.
Yeah.
But we don't need more than four phone lines. We really don't. I mean, it's, it's just, most of the time, it's, it's duty or I and somebody up here. So, you know, if we get four phone calls simultaneously, the fifth phone call would go to a busy signal. That's not a very frequent occurrence. And of course, the garage remains on a separate line.
Could you put those on the log?
No, we, we could do that, too. They, they're actually, wait a minute, yeah, sorry. The garage is going to be tied into this so that they would have an option on this, and it would just go over to them.
Eliminate their.
Eliminate them, just like we were eliminating their Internet, because we, we have a server in this building. We're paying Comcast business rates for one computer over there.
Come across the.
Yeah, it's across the thing. So I have two boxes downstairs. We put a beam, it across the parking lot, you know, Wi-Fi system, for $300.
But in fairness, we are getting our Internet in Coal Hall for free from Comcast.
Well, yeah.
According to the.
According to their.
Guy who looked up our account number today, the, we're, we're paying, like, we're paying $20 for a static IP address, but we're not paying for bandwidth in Coal Hall. That was, they gave us this, and then when we added a line for the garage, we're paying regular rates for that. And what we're doing now with the help of RCS is taking the line here and just beaming it across the parking lot.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to go back and read their, their documents to make sure that this is some kind of deal for having put that in, because if this is a deal for having put that in.
You cancel that.
Then we, then we better not cancel that, or we'll just pay $80 here. There, there seems to be a trade-off here. I had not heard that before, so I have to go, if we even have a contract, Comcast has been here forever, so I'm going to, I, I kind of assumed that was when, when RCS set the, the system up, that that was something that they had been involved in, but I'll have to go try and find a Comcast agreement that says that we pay whatever we pay here, $20 a month, because we did that. I mean, they get a separate, a separate bill for the garage.
Right.
They seem to be a standalone, is the way I was looking at it. So I'll have to look into that a little bit.
Yeah, well, my, the way I thought it was, was that Comcast, we're on a courtesy account from Comcast in Coal Hall. We pay for the static IP address, which is a special service, and then at some point, we said, we need it over there, and they said, they just sold it at regular rates to us for a connection.
It could be, and they, we might get that rate here because it, it's a government building, and they might just have it through their licensing in the state that they have to provide a service to the town, which might be Internet access at, at nominal cost.
Back to the cost on these systems, the, it sounds like the bulk of our savings from this are from reducing from six to four lines, which saves us $15 a month times two, it sounds like. But also, the main, the main savings is from buying the equipment rather than renting it for $200 a month.
Yeah, we're just paying to have this stuff instead of owning it outright. And, and the upgrade, which one way or the other, we're going to have to buy equipment or rent it to upgrade. And once, once we own the equipment, I mean, really, in an operation like this, it's not going to, it's not going to be, needed to be upgraded anytime soon. I mean, we're working on such an antique now.
Wouldn't be absolutely.
Yeah, we, we could use this for another, like I said, in 12, 30 years, when, when somebody else goes up. It's time to join the 20, you know, the next century. But the.
Phone bills are still going to be in the vicinity of $200 a month plus long distance, right?
No, it would be, the CIT, we can get a flat rate of $2,995 plus $1,215 in fees for four lines. That'd be $168.40 fixed a month, and that would be the only thing we're paying, because we own the phones. And that's, that's, you know.
It's like a year's worth of Comcast, I mean, at SilverNet.
SilverNet, yeah.
And we own the phone, and we get 60.
And we own the phones, and, and, you know, we're, we're pretty much up ready to go. That's for eight phones and the, the thing for the desk, you know, along with a list of other parts they have to put in. You know, the only other expense that comes out of that one is if they find we have to start running some wires in here, because these wires are inadequate or whatever. But all, all the phones work somewhat, so.
You go, you go with voice-over IP, you're definitely going to put in all-new wiring.
Well, we, we almost have cables to all the, the workstations now, I think. It's the, it's the same cable that carries Internet would be the, the cable. But yeah, we, we probably would require some new cabling, but it's a different kind of cable. Yeah, it's an Ethernet cable.
True.
But the, the 168 is, is our total recurring cost, and that includes long distance?
Yeah, that's, that's the fixed rate.
You say 68 or 168?
168, 168.
That's a good improvement from the 400 or so that we're paying now.
Yep.
50% saving.
Well, I did, I know that a lot of companies are going to the VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol these days, and the, the way it usually works is you have a little bit higher, although sometimes not, upfront cost. Essentially, you buy a box and then your calls are free, more or less, after that. That's my home, that works that way over the Internet. So the, the advantage of that system is cost. Like I say, after you buy your equipment, your, your phone costs are almost, are in your, say, part of your Internet cost, assuming that you're already paying for the Internet. The downside is the reliability in terms of, your Internet connection goes down, your phone goes down, and also if electricity goes down, your phone goes down, whereas traditional phone lines are powered through the, through the communication line, so they stay up. I spoke to CIT about that today and asked, was asking why they didn't offer a VoIP option, and what they said was they didn't think that we would be able to get a good enough Internet connection here to make it work. And she pointed out to me, something I should have realized, is that with a phone system where you're working over the Internet, it's the upload speed is, is just as important as the download speed. Normally, when you buy Internet, you buy, you know, 10, five megabytes per second download and maybe one up, because you're not usually sending a lot of stuff out, down. You're, you're downloading movies. You're not uploading movies. But with the phone, you got to make sure you have enough to go both ways. And my initial talk today with Comcast sounded like, we don't know as far as, you know, your courtesy account, if you have enough Internet going up to, to do that, but if you were just, you know, bought it as a business, sufficient Internet to do that would be around $120 a month. But $168 a month. Um, but a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a month versus a hundred and twenty dollars a month, uh, I'd say the reliability would override that, and we would just go with the, with the, with the traditional phone lines. We're down to four phone lines, uh, it's, you know, if we were, you know, the state Capitol where you had a hundred phone lines, it might be a different equation, but for us, it sounds like, uh, this might be the way to go.
Yeah, and for organizations like that, they're running a background service of fixed lines anyway, a pots lines, some emergency services, and that always has backups of these.
Right, right.
We, we don't have that. Uh, you know, my concern with, with the voice over is if the power went down, the internet went down, no one could call here. And I didn't think to check with, with Jerry Madison, but why, where's the emergency operations center supposed to be? It's probably supposed to be here.
Well, that's what I was just gonna suggest.
So it's probably be better that we had the phones, or maybe it's the fire department, but, uh, town halls normally turn into some kind of action center, and, uh, if people were scrambling to find our fax line to call us, that would be a problem.
Maybe Jerry would just say, you know, that maybe there's some state statute that we need to have.
As a, as a shelter or a commanding control center.
So do you have enough information to go on, or do you still, I've gotta dig into some more stuff?
Uh, what I would suggest i- is, and one reason why I wanted to get, had these three, was to show different prices. I didn't want, want to ask someone in to waste their time if the board wasn't interested in moving forward. If we're interested in moving, moving forward with like CIT, which has the lowest overall price, and they even have another option here, the phone lines for fourteen ninety-five a month plus the twelve fifteen, but then they charge one point five cents a minute for local and three point nine for long distance. Uh, I like the fixed because it's just standard.
It's easy to budget, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, what I would suggest is if, if the board wants to go and, and they like the CIT thing, that we ask them to come in, if there's more questions, uh, she can explain it more, it's her business than, than I can, but it seems certainly less and, and a more efficient way of, of communicating than what we have now.
Go on a motion, Tim.
Um, just, can I ask another question first? Do we have the same numbers in terms of our recurring cost from First Choice, what they estimate? I didn't, I don't recall CIT.
No, they basically gave us an equipment list.
Yeah. And I also noticed that they, they have a little banner on here that says, uh, that they're using our existing wiring.
Yes.
Um, CIT, is that their plan as well, do we know?
CIT will charge a hundred and twenty dollars for a line if these lines don't work.
Okay.
But the lines themselves here, I mean, they're supporting the phones we have now, it's just the phones are getting so old they're falling apart. Yeah, this one over here might need work. Uh, that one seems to be a little problematic, but, uh, it, it's, it's not so much the wiring of, for the phones here, it's, it's the age and of everything. Yeah, I did, I did notice that on First Choice, and First Choice doesn't give any, I mean, for the size of the bid or the proposal, there's no, uh, service providers' information on here, so we still have to go out and get service for these phones.
Yeah, so their total was forty-six hundred, and CIT's was?
Well, CIT's, we can put in for two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and pay a hundred and sixty-eight forty a month.
Yeah.
That's what the four twenty-nine thirty dollars a line plus the twelve fifteen.
Plus the twelve fifteen, yeah.
Art? I think, uh, the only motion I would make is that we think, we, we know we need a new phone system and gave, gave the authority to just, uh, get some more information.
Would you like her to, to, uh, come to the next meeting and?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, come to the next meeting and, and, uh, that way we can all ask questions, because there are lots of questions, the stuff is a little bit more technical than.
I mean, they're obviously the best price-wise.
Well, they're, they're price-wise, uh, they're banked and company, they're, they're right here, and, uh, the, she got the service, the different, the service provider, uh, she provided, uh, some alternatives, so, uh, they'll drive the cost down. So I'll, I'll arrange for her to, for the next meeting, and then we can ask all the questions we need to and, uh, finalize them.
Okay. Howard Park update?
Okay, uh, the, everything's done, except the painting of the buildings. Uh, William Hardy's, uh, conglomerate, finished, finished, finished the roofing.
It's good work.
Finished the roofing last week. Uh, the, everything, everything is, is done. Uh, it's come out very well, uh, people are using it. The Soccer Association, Nor shaft, will be painting the buildings. Hopefully, uh, we're trying to schedule a date and get the paint. Hopefully, it'll be done before winter, uh, but we're kind of bucking up against it already here. Uh, so if it gets postponed to the spring, we'll paint them in the spring. The park's really only gonna be open now for maybe six or seven more weeks.
Might be great weather for the next week.
Yeah, well, volunteer parents and, and the, and the children, the, uh, old enough children will come and help paint, too, as kind of a community service project, and, um, it'll be, pretty much be the standard green paint that's on them now, and we haven't thought up any brilliant new colors for it.
Green is a good color for a park.
Yeah, yeah, green's a good color for the park. But, uh, yeah, the roofs are in, um, everything's functioning fine, the task courts are completed, the lights are down, the electrical work's been done. Uh, the only thing left is, is the well, uh, which I could, we could ask Mr. Mans how the well project is coming, if, if he knows.
Mr. Finessi.
Mr. Finessi, sorry, you're a mans engineering, I've been saying all night, Mr.
We're ready to submit for source approval, as long as we can agree on location.
Yeah, I talked to.
We've looked at some alternatives for.
Yeah.
The reason why it's being contaminated, uh, that it's only a twenty-six foot deep well, uh, that we know is being fed just by groundwater, which is, of course, being possibly contaminated by surface water. Uh, we looked at alternatives of drilling down from the existing well to see if that could be salvaged. Uh, it doesn't look like it would be able to. Uh, but what we're gonna rec, what I recommend, and we were looking at doing some other sampling, but is to, when the new well is drilled, make sure that it's encased completely down to bedrock, uh, grounded for state standards, and then this way we know the water supply's coming up out of the bedrock, it's clean. Uh, but, uh, and there are some other items with the state. Uh, obviously, it's a state process, they, it's a three-stage, um, process for approval, it's source approval, uh, construction approval, and then operational approval, uh, which we laid out as part of the proposal we gave today. Uh, so, you know, we look at getting source approval, uh, within the, you know, as long as we can agree on kind of where to put it, and the state agrees, and getting that approval within the next few weeks, uh, to a month, and then this way it can be drilled. Uh, usually, the winter time's a great time to drill, because usually you can get a discount from the driller. Uh, because a pile truck can just go through and blaze a path down for the, the truck to get in and out of, uh, because there's, tends to be there's slow time, and then this way it can be all hooked up again for, uh, for spring. The state process of all takes a few months, you know, four to six months, so it's not possible to get it done before that. And since the state just decided to raise all their fees and then fire people and cut services, you're paying more and you're getting less more, which is across the board.
Where are they figuring out putting the well?
Uh, you know, relatively close to its, uh, location, uh, because it would be drilled differently and, uh, installed differently. This way, the same infrastructure could be used, uh, but in the general area, anywhere between where it is now and maybe the ball field fence, an alternative is up near the pavilion, but then again, you're running more ditch line and conduit and power line. But even in the general location, within fifty feet of where it is, is the best option.
Isn't it more likely to get contaminated there, though?
No, it wouldn't, because it wouldn't be a gravel well like the existing one.
No, he'd be down with the bedrock.
It would be drilled down with casing directed to the bedrock, grounded in the bedrock twenty feet.
Yeah.
This way the water's coming up, and it's, wouldn't have a lot.
Yeah, because what they're probably getting now is, uh, that's all swamp down there.
Right.
They're getting swamp on it, surface, on the surface.
Because I mentioned to him about picking that site out, the left field fence, because the infrastructure's there, we don't want to run pipes from the pavilion all the way across, that's a, a lot more expensive.
I noticed the bathrooms were open on Saturday, I was a little surprised, I didn't know if the water's on or not.
The, the water is on, we keep trying to tell Soccer that the, the water's on, there's no drinking water on, there's no, the sinks are all off, but we wanted the, the facility to be available.
I didn't try to visit, because I wasn't going inside, I just happened to notice the doors were open.
Yeah.
Because we were upset at Soccer.
Yeah. Um, and we, just the sinks are closed completely, there's no way to get any drinking water anywhere. Uh, which, we got the notice from the state, starting next summer, with our new license, we're going to have to test the water monthly, uh, six times from the beginning, opening to the end. So, uh, the water department, our water department will do that test for us every month. Well, like they do here, they'll just do two instead of, instead of one. But yeah, I just got that letter today, because when we go to the new, uh, I forget the acronym for it, but the license we have to have.
TNC.
TNC, uh, it'll have to be tested every monthly, so.
What's PNC, what's tested?
Transient non-community.
Okay.
There, there's a lot of definitions. It's the cheapest way you can do a public well.
Okay.
NTNC is the next one, it's non-transient non-community. That's almost, that's a step right between where you're gonna be in a public community spot like the town has, or we share wherever, you know, where it comes from. Uh, so you're at the lowest stage of it. But again, you do have to do the testing. But it's a, it's a, like a twelve or fifteen dollar test, it's not.
Yeah. He just goes around with the test tube, but he's.
Initial testing is usually at like four or five hundred bucks. But if you take a free public community supply, that testing, initial testing is fifteen hundred to two thousand, plus it's a couple hundred bucks a month, so you wouldn't be going into that.
Great.
Good.
So, well, I think that's it for Howard Park.
Okay.
It's up.
Ready to go.
And as if the whole meeting hasn't been, it's now time for the kind of.
Let's see. Uh, I only have one thing tonight, and it's finishing downstairs, uh, at Shewell Construction. It's a thirteen hundred dollar estimate to finish the painting project that started in the administrative treasurer's office, apparently decades ago. And, uh, it's just thirteen hundred dollars to paint the ceiling and the walls, and repair the walls that are all spackled everywhere down there. Uh, and we hope to get to that sometime in the next month or so. We have to move filing cabinets to safe and everything else, and, uh, we're trying to find a time where it's convenient for everybody. Ed would like to do it over the weekend, which is kind of a problem for us, so we might just look even towards as we get into winter. But as long as, uh, I can go ahead with the thirteen hundred, it'll finish downstairs and it'll be done. But that also includes the wall in the clerk's office that we left with the wood paneling, but, uh, we changed our minds on that, wanna, wanna finish that off, too. It's too much of a contrast, we thought the contrast would be nice, but it's too much. It's too much wood, you know, so.
So you don't want them doing it on the weekend because no one's there watching them?
Well, nobody's here, um, you know, it's, it's kind of a, a problem, you know. It's same like I was unlocking the tennis courts, but I go back to check because I unlocked it and I'm responsible for it. So if I unlock the building, I'm gonna have to come back and make sure it's locked and everything. I mean, I can easily, on, on days when, uh, the treasurer isn't here, it's like, it's not, it's like a two-day project. You know, uh, with, with this and the new phone system, I could actually sit here and, and work up here for two days, you know, it's, wouldn't be the end of the world to get it done and just get it over with. You know, that would be the ideal.
I don't think you want to be doing our own tax collection time, no.
No, no, no. No, no, we might want to end before that. But yeah, it's, uh, we want to take a few things down, and, uh, those walls are pretty nasty at this point.
Okay.
Okay. That's, um, in the routine expense category.
Yeah.
Are you happy to?
Yeah.
Let him proceed?
Absolutely.
Well, then that'll finish downstairs, and that'll be done, and then we can look up, up here.
Make an improvement.
Try and come up with a plan for, for next spring for up here, uh, because it'd be nice that we do this. Don't look too high, I'm hoping to have a drop ceiling there.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll bring up those plans later on, but.
Okay. Any other business? Okay, um, action items that I caught, um, we're going to postpone the cemetery road project, but that means we need to remember to budget for it, uh, this fall.
Mm-hmm. You go by other business?
I did ask for other business, did you have some?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, there's a, we have the appointment policy, it's posted online for the DRV, the planning commission, and the.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so that, that's, we can reference that.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and then look at that.
Yeah, let's look at that. I don't recall that it's, I don't think it requires that, uh, we seek the current member's, uh, in, input. We can decide if we want the current member's input on that.
Have Chris come and ask him if he has any specific questions, the chair.
Yeah, but, yeah, let's review that policy.
Let me, yeah, I'll look at it and, uh, get it off to you guys.
But under other business, um, can we, in our proposed, or our agenda, some place up the top, could we, um, go over action items from previous meeting?
Yes.
Just so we can, so that things don't get forgotten. I don't want to spend a lot of time just saying.
I think that's a real good idea. Um, the, uh, the action items get dealt with by David, and, uh, I've noticed that they do get dealt with, so I haven't bothered to bring it up, but I think it's a real good way to close the loop in a, in a public way, so that people see that we're not just putting these items on there and forgetting them. So we'll, uh, starting with this list, uh, this list will be, uh, reviewed, uh, we'll review it. I would s- suggest review, review action items at the end of the meeting, uh, like we do now.
That's fine.
But review the previous actions.
That's fine.
And, uh, see if we've covered them all, and then add to the list in the same way.
Should we, should we do the action items up towards the top of the meeting?
Yeah, after, after public.
Like maybe after announcements, that's what I was thinking, and then if, if somebody wants to comment, the public could comment.
Yeah.
Um, we could. My, my suggestion is to keep just the one, one bullet item, because, uh, by and large, these are mostly David and my tasks, so, uh, it's just a, a way to say that they did get done from last week, but if there's, uh.
Okay.
There's strong opinion that we need a separate action, a separate line item, I would go with that, but.
Yeah.
My recommendation is review action items from last week and review new action items in the same agenda item at the end of the meeting.
As long as we do it, I think it's good. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, if there is an action item that requires, uh, select board action, it'll be on the agenda, because part of the action will event, uh, put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, uh, gonna budget for the cemetery road, uh, as Art suggested, we need to start a dialogue with the restaurant on Blueberry Hill about the berm that's in the right of way that's messing up the road, and try to, uh, get that dealt with. We're going to postpone the, uh, the decision on the painting, that means we're gonna re-bid it during the winter and, uh, make a decision about that, or, or, or paint in the spring. Uh, we're gonna invite CIT to come to our next meeting to talk about the phones. Um, and I just have a, one to myself to fa, to close the loop with Comcast about the, the VoIP and see if, if it is still an option or not. Uh, but it's starting to sound more and more like the, the pots lines is the way to go for us.
Could you, could you put an action item, too, to have, uh, maybe touch base with Jerry Madison and ask his opinion on VoIP versus, uh, hard line, and if it's even permissible under our management, emergency management plan?
Yeah.
I, I can't remember going through that plan, whether there was something specific